Onto the public hearing. Motion to open a public hearing. Modifications of PB District. Second?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone like to speak on the public hearing?
I'll leave the wire. Thank you for hearing me, Board, and appreciate the time. It's been awhile, so thank you. Now, you know, at one point, you have to call a state a state. So just hear me out, and it's not a personal attack. You know, first, I want to say that zoning Calvert Street for four-story apartments on all floors down to Post Place sounds like a Steve Malpatano deal.
That's not necessary. Please don't bring personal attacks or names into your... You can say whatever you want, okay? It's a public hearing to talk about the project on Calvert Street. There's no reason to have names mentioned.
Well, this is why I prefaced it.
Well, there's no prefacing.
Preface what?
No, I can say what I want.
Just please, I mean, say what you have to say on the proposal.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's a public hearing, so I said at one point, you have to say what you actually feel. It's not a personal attack. It feels this way to me. Ron, I don't get paid for this. In fact, this costs me money to be here. Instead of working, instead of working, I, to support my family and my home, I do this stuff. It keeps me awake at night, you know. There's a history here. So first, I want to say that this feels like a Steve Malpatano deal.
You're out of order. I asked you once, not for personal attacks.
Which benefits his friends.
This board will not tolerate that.
Which benefits his friends and screws the downtown residents. Now, I'm done with that. I had to get it out. Again, I'm a very humble guy, and I want to say nice, 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 but at one point, you have to say what you feel.
You don't even know what I think. I mean, that's an absurdity, to come in here and even make a suggestion like that.
You're all about development and spending and bonding.
No, I'm all about the town of Harrison. Unfortunately, you're not. Would you please keep your...
We disagree.
Look, if you have a comment that is specific to the public hearing tonight, whether you're in favor of it, opposed to...
It is.
No, no, personal attacks, there is no room for that in this room. There just isn't, okay? It wouldn't matter who it is. If you have a comment that you'd like to make, you're in favor of something, you're opposed to something, you think it should be eight stories, you think it should be no stories.
Yeah, hate.
Whatever it is, make your comment, but for God's sakes, don't criticize or accuse people of things that you have absolutely no knowledge of. It's not correct. It's wrong. It's absolutely wrong.
I feel that way, though.
And I would say that with respect to any member of this board or any other member in the room. You can't do that, Robert.
How many...
It's just wrong.
I've been up here many, many times.
So make your... No, you have.
I want you out of office.
Make your comments that are specific...
I think you're bad for Harrison, and you're an old...
This isn't part of the public hearing.
Robert, Robert, you'll be asked to leave. You'll be asked to leave. It's not part of the public hearing.
You know what, Ron? Let him say whatever he wants, because it's not relevant. Just go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, we'll see how you vote.
Go ahead and say whatever you want.
We'll see how you vote.
Go and say whatever you want.
Please, please, Steve, help me invoke no on this proposal, and I won't have to think this way.
I'm going to tell you something, Robert. What I do will be...
I'm going to recommend to the board that you adhere to your rules of procedure. Allow the speaker to speak for his allotted time if he hasn't used it already. Avoid colloquy, back and forth with members of the public. Let them speak on the proposal, and require them to confine his comments through the proposal.
If they speak with respect to the proposal.
And if they don't, deem them out of order and move on to next speaker.
Well, is there a limit in a public hearing, Mr. Crowe?
Why don't you just make your comments about the law?
No, I don't think there's a limit in a public hearing.
And stop trying to bait everyone into debate. Just make your comments.
What is... Okay, can I ask a question? How long is my... I'm ignorant. How long is my allotted time for a public hearing?
Well, if you're out of order, you don't get any time, so I would suggest you keep your comments. You have a lot of time.
Who to answer? I have as much time as I need. So, I'm sorry, I don't... Everybody that knows me knows I am as humble as could be, but you have to say it. We have no representation to retain our small-town feel, except for Silver Lake and maybe Purchase. I'm asking Marlena, Freddie, and Ron to think of this in their section of town and help us down here and vote no. Where does this idea come from? Okay, think about that. Walk down to Post Place and visualize it. It won't look better. Post Place is past Ellsworth Avenue. It's the whole thing. Anyway, okay, I'll stick to my budget. Don't you see that the small town near Manhattan is what everybody wants? Or are you just following along? I mean, don't you see that? Scarsdale sees it, Rye sees it. I've called you a bunch of developers, and I just can't back away from that. And 2008, I read something about that. I want to make it clear that Harrison is not some upstate town that needs a tax base. Small cells. If you would stop spending money and bonding like crazy people, we would not need to overdevelop. Again, Joe and Steve have led us downtown, so I'm asking the uptown people to do the right thing. Overdevelopment is bad for Harrison's home values in the area, because it ruins the bucolic feel of the town, the aesthetics. Calvert Street is not so bad. Take a walk down there, as long as the garbage isn't out in the street. It's really not so bad. We can put a few trees, and it would help it. Overdevelopment burdens our school system and will probably cause Lew Wool to build in the L.M.K. Woods, which I propose would actually make some people happy, and I won't use his name. Overdevelopment will make Calvert Street like a tunnel. It's a narrow street. It'll make it look worse, especially apartments where people have no place to get some air except a stoop. People are already hanging out, smoking cigarettes there. So, you know, people smoke, they can't smoke in their apartments. They're outside. Overdevelopment overburdens our emergency service, like fire and police. Or is that a desirable effect? I mean, there's a domino effect here. That 1,500 feet on both sides of the street, four stories, I don't know how many units that is, it's going to cause the fire department, the police department, everybody's going to have to get bigger and develop more. Our fire... Anyway, we need to fix some of these places already. Overdevelopment makes the people that own the land tons of money, but lowers the home values next to it because of excessive traffic and population. Considering the rezoning of Emilio's Restaurant, Peter's Restaurant, Porchester Lumber, the... I don't know if he's slipping span on the property, but Farrar's old property, the MTA Project, and all of the other approved projects, this would truly make an overdevelopment nightmare. You know? Do you... Again, don't you see that people want a small-town feel, not four-story apartments on a street that's too small to handle it? Freddie, you've done a great job in West Harrison. It looks great. I'm jealous. You know, when you come downtown, it's like a whole different story.
I can't take credit for it.
Well...
The people that you spoke about were in office. I may have been involved in the Neighborhood Association then, but Joe and Steve were instrumental in doing that.
Hey, I was...
Not myself.
I spoke positively for the West Harrison Development Project. I actually wanted to bond, putting the wires under the ground. So, you know, I love this town, you know, don't get me wrong. So, would you want this on Lake Street? Marlena, you claim to be environmentally friendly and have helped us before. You have helped us, thank you. Would you want it on Anderson Hill Road? I mean, I don't get this. Ron, you like nature. You know, help me out here, please. And I'll ask Steve and Joe, you know, to help, too. Maybe I can add a request to Judge Voach to sell his land to the people of Harrison at fair market value, instead of possibly, possibly, or skirting the law by not offering... by developing the land and selling it afterwards. I'll summarize this on the Watchdog website when I get through this stonewalling and find some facts on that corner piece of property. We could use that corner piece of property for the rec. That's another issue, perhaps, but, you know, given a pilot agreement to the place up in West Tester Avenue, it doesn't help us all out. Only people that know what I'm talking about will understand that. So I'll finish up. This is an opportunity lost to retain what is good about Harrison, and I will not let it go. Every landowner will be posted, and your reputation as a board of developers will be galvanized forever. Yeah, I have to get a little tough here. I just... You're keeping me... You're making me crazy. Please vote not... Not making me crazy, you're getting me very upset. Please vote no, because it's wrong for Harrison.
Thank you. That's not necessary.
This is a theater.
Hi, Karen Morrow. Thanks for letting me speak. I want to kind of piggyback on what Rob was just saying. I agree with a lot of the things he talked about with this development. There's a lot of developing going on in Harrison. One of the things that I came here for was in regard to the fact that a lot of one-family homes are being knocked down, and we're getting, in some cases, two duplexes placed on the property where there was once a one-family, or there was a one-family and we're getting a huge duplex. There's no property around these buildings that are going up. Rob mentioned the stress on our school system, and I brought this up at... I was at a zoning board meeting back in, I was April or May, with regard to the movie theater project, and I questioned them, had anybody done any research on how it was going to impact the Parsons School? And they claimed, oh, it's only going to be, you know, 12 kids at the most, blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, but wait a minute. What about this possibility of the Avalon Project going through? When you start... You know, we can't be so short-sighted and not think about the big picture here of how is this going to affect us in five years from now, 10 years from now? I don't know if you know, but Parsons School, and I worked there, was, when I left, busting at the seams. I don't know where all of these children are going to go. We're going to have to think about probably expanding there, and that's going to be another I just don't see the benefit of all this construction without stopping to think, how is this going to affect us in the long term? Aesthetically, what is it going to look like? I can't imagine Calvert Street with these...
Four-story.
...four-story buildings. I just... You know, we say it's great to live in Harrison, and we want to... I don't know if I want to live here anymore, quite frankly. I mean, it's getting to the point where it's not nice to look at some of these streets. We have cookie-cutter homes going up, we've got these huge duplexes going up, now we're talking about these other huge projects. You know, what is it going to do in terms of flooding? We have... A lot of people in Harrison have flooding problems. You build these houses now, there's no more property, where's the water going to go? Our sewer systems... Has anybody thought about the fact that if we put this Avalon Project, if it goes through, is our sewer system going to be able to handle? Because I know for a fact that they're having issues in White Plains right now with all the construction that they've done there with their sewers. They, you know, they have to put in bigger systems there. I'm really very concerned, I'm very upset about what's going on, and I wish we would put on the brakes, step back, and really look at the big picture. Not just, this is good, if this goes through, it's going to be great for the tax, you know, our taxes, we're creating more revenue, blah, blah, blah. What are the other problems, though, we're creating here? You know, put the taxes aside for a minute, and think about the other problems that we're creating. What are we doing to our schools? What are we doing to the environment aesthetically? What are we doing to our community? You know, downtown needs to be revitalized. I wish we'd put more effort into that. And the traffic, yeah. Here's another thing. We're putting in these duplexes that... Okay, everyone's going to say, well, you got a two-car garage. Well, what happens if these families, all of a sudden, they have teenage son and daughter, whatever, now they need their cars? We just went through a whole parking situation, you know, in this area with permits and whatever, and, you know, has anybody thought of the impact of parking? You know, in the future, for some of these homes that are being put up? Hyatt, Hyatt is, right now, as it stands, you cannot get down that street sometimes with a vehicle because of the parking situation there. Now, there are two new houses going up in a spot where there used to be a nursing home. Where are those people going to park? You know, I really think... Does anybody have any answers to these questions, or any thoughts, or any considerations?
This is a public hearing. You're here to voice your opinion, your feelings.
Yeah.
I thank you for that, and we're not going to answer right now. We have statements to make when everyone else makes theirs, okay? There's a process that every development goes through, through the planning board. Everything is vetted, the sewer systems, the schools, it's all vetted very thoroughly, and it's done to the utmost, okay? So I thank you for your comments.
I think we need to look at the big picture, though.
Absolutely.
I really, really think we need to look at the big picture.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I want to also make a plea about the parking situation. When you put four-story apartment buildings down Calvert Street, it's not... You don't have enough parking in town as it is now, and so when you add all these extra apartments, and we usually say, well, you get 1.2 or 1.5 parking spaces per apartment, where are the other cars going to go? We already don't have enough parking, so that's going to be an issue. The other issue that I can foresee, living on Harrison Avenue, is you have an intersection at Harrison and Halsted right now, which you can't get up and down the street in the morning when school's in session, or when the people are trying to go to school. And it starts pretty early, that that's backed up. Now, we're going to have not only Harrison and Halsted, but we're going to have Calvert and Heinemann Place and Harrison Avenue backed up. So... Because I don't think you're supposed to go up and down Broadway when schools, you know, when the kids are trying to go to school early in the morning. So what's going to happen then? You're going to have just tons more traffic. So please be mindful of that. Also, you talked at the last board meeting about the... How much recreation space had to be allowed per apartment? Well, I don't know what's going to happen with these places. There's a lot of these places that don't have a lot of property already, so now if you're going to add extra apartments there, I don't think it's the right thing to say, well, we can use the rooftop and balconies as recreation space. That's really not appropriate. So please keep those things in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you for your time and for listening. I will be as brief as possible. My name is Debbie Nye, and this is my brother, D. Carnavala. We have a very long history with the town of Harrison, and although we don't live here anymore personally, we do have... We have planned on and have invested money in the town. My brother and my father own Seven Purdy Street. They did a meticulous renovation of Halsted's restaurant and the upstairs, you know, what was, back in the day, a bowling alley, is now beautiful office space. You'll often find my father, you know, going down Purdy Street and other places with, you know, a weed sprayer, because he's very meticulous and doesn't want any weeds out front. So we're just, you know, we respect everyone's opinion, but we must... We disagree. We're for the progress, and we are for the revitalization, and we love the fact that there's been so many projects coming to Harrison. For a while, it was very stagnant, and our families have been in the business for a really long time, and we're happy to come back now and invest our money in Harrison. We recently did a project on Lockwood Place that went very well, and, yeah, you have to jump through a lot of hoops, so we understand that. You know, there's so many things that we need to...
Let her speak. She might have to speak. Let her speak. Don't interrupt myself. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. And we, you know, we were so happy to do that project, and it went really well, that we decided to do another one. And, you know, we purchased 12 Nelson from an old friend. We thought this would be a great purchase for us and a great way to invest more money in our town. And basically, you know, 12 Nelson, I mean, it is not an aesthetically pleasing building. I mean, I have a picture here if anybody wants to see. I mean, this is 100... It was 1912. It's an over 100-year-old building. It sits on the corner of a very well-used, you know, crossroad to Nelson and Calvert and Metro North, and it's just a horrible, you know, corner. It doesn't take advantage of the property, it's overgrown, it's just ready to, you know, get a new life. We are not huge developers, we just want to, you know, recreate this space and make something that's really great for Harrison and for everybody. And we are asking for, you know, a zoning change. We are asking that, you know, we would love to do residential only. We don't want to have to comply with professional or business or retail in this building, because we don't feel like it would get used. You know, we're on the barrier, we're on the outskirts of town, not in town. We want to make this a crossroad into the residential section, so we just want to have basically a nice building. We would love, you know, the maximum height of 45 feet to get the four stories. We understand people have a problem with that. I really do understand, you know, everything you're saying, I do. But it's not to get more and more people, it's actually to give people more space. People want space, they want renovated, they want new. I also work for Julia Beefy, and I have watched the trends on what people want. Over the last five to seven years, everybody wants in-town living, and everybody wants a lot of space. They don't want to be crammed into a one-bedroom, or a studio, or two-bedrooms even. I think, you know, a walk score is really important. I don't know if anybody knows what that means, but it means that you want to be close to the beautiful renovated library, the parks, the schools, the downtown, the five new restaurants in addition to all the other ones we've had. People want to be able to walk to these places, which will actually negate the problem of the traffic and the parking, because if you, you know, sell your house and decide to move into, you know, a great luxury apartment in town, basically, you do that because you want to walk everywhere. You want to walk to the train. So that will solve a lot of the problems with a lot of these, you know, big developments going up. I mean, ours is not as big, but like I said, it should solve some of that. The parking is on-site, and then you're walking to everything else. And basically, it's not... I mean, I understand the impact in the schools, but most of these apartments are bought by empty nesters, people downsizing, and we also have a very young adult population who's just... They're delaying marriage, they're delaying children, and they want to come back to their hometown and have a place to buy or to rent, and it'd be nice to have a place for them, too. And that's really not impacting schools yet, because their families are sort of later into their 30s now. So that's basically it. I mean, we really would appreciate, you know, you considering this zoning change and this height change to get in a very nice, you know, four-story residential building.
Thank you.
Appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's very interesting, because this morning, I went through a review of my life in the town of Harrison, et cetera, and I opened my window and said to myself, what happened to the apple trees, and what happened to the birds? What happened to the quiet? What happened to suburbia when we moved here, what it was like? And I ended up saying to myself, but more important to that, what happened to all those corporates who were going to give us so much money that we wouldn't even have taxes? Under Charlie Valencia, we had a zero tax one year, but I've been here for 50-some-odd years, if I remember correctly, and that was the only year, and we're still striving. What happened to your promises to the people who you told were going to have suburbia? What you've done is you converted it into, first of all, the garbage truck coming up and down the street at about whatever time they do, the noise that comes from every other place, the din of a street that says, no trucks, but trucks go up and down. What happened to New York City? It was Harrison 300 years ago. It is no different than we are, except that we're developing, developing, and when you think of what you're doing, you're backing up four-story buildings behind private homes. What right do you have as a group of people who promised the people who are in those houses that they were in suburbia? Have you forgotten them? Or aren't they taxpayers? Or are you going to do something to alleviate their pain by compensating them with money? I want to know what your solution is, not what your thoughts are and what your feelings are, and what in truth is this whole story, which is an absolute false presentation of giving them quiet places? You're talking about developing the train station with a parking lot as you turn left, with further than that, another parking lot going underneath, and you're building it up for what? For when? For where? You made West Harrison a lovely-looking place. Why doesn't your effort go in beautifying rather than denying the fact that you've sold us something where the highest paid, or one of the highest-paid taxpayers in the United States? Why? And what are we getting? What are we getting? We're getting exactly what you're dictating and building and building, and you make believe that you're doing us a great favor. You're not doing us any favor, you're not doing your children any favor, or your grandchildren any favor, by doing what you're doing. You've taken the hardware stores away, the food store away, the feeling of intimacy in talking to the people there who are going to have a sandwich on that street, and you're very proud of it. And why you have to entertain all of this without immediately making a decision, let's stop our growth at this stage in the game and cut our taxes. Our $82 million bonding of this last, the 12th until the 15th, and 15... 19... I'm sorry, 2015, hasn't expired yet, so we don't know where the bonding is going to go. All of this is being done absolutely, as far as I'm concerned, without consideration for the people you're supposedly dealing with and the people whose elections you want to get, when you're actually harming every single one of them and the future of their children.
My name is John Voach. I want to thank you for giving me some time to speak again. And once again, I'm speaking on behalf of at least five or six families on Calvert Street that are joining this petition to revitalize downtown Harrison, especially on Calvert Street. This is a very, very exciting time for Harrison, and the board has always been considerate, and the board has been thoughtful over the years. The board, in its wisdom, has created two areas in Harrison that have two acres, so people that want to live on two acres can live on two acres. Previous administrations and prior boards, there's a one-acre zone in Harrison. That's attractive for people that want to have big yards and big homes. Town is also... Has one-half-acre zone for people that want to live in a half acre. And the town has always had zones 50 by 100, 75 by 100. And the town has also had apartment houses. And what I'm leading to is, this creates a strong town. When you have diverse areas and you have diverse people living there, it makes the town stronger. You have all types of people and all economic strands of people. There are many, many people in this town. As Debbie Nye... As Debbie Nye wisely said and correctly said, "The world is changing. The world is changing. People are changing. People's habits are changing." And the statistics verify that. They verify it in New York City, Westchester County, they verify it in almost every community in Westchester County, Lower Westchester, that has a train system or a train stations. Condos and co-ops are being developed around the train station, because that's where people want to live, and people want to live in new buildings. I've received many phone calls from former Harrison residents, young adults, and they said, "Mr. Voach, we want to come back to Harrison, but we're not ready to own a house yet. You know, we heard about your project, we're all in favor of it." As Debbie Nye said, empty nesters, it's a, it's a beautiful thing. This is a win-win situation. We all know that there are some new restaurants came to town. Just yesterday, I went to one of the restaurants, and one of the owners, you know, he recognized me, and he was aware of the project, and he says, "Mr. Voach, how fast can you build those, get the projects going that you and the Carnival family have?" And I knew what he was leading to. He says, "We need customers. We need customers." And customers that could walk to the restaurants, it's good for everybody. It does solve a parking problem. When you create these small apartment houses, and I say "small," a four-family apartment house is not overbearing, 45 feet is not overbearing. If you take a ride or walk down Calvert Street...
I'm going to ask you to show some respect to the person at the podium, thank you. I'm going to ask you to show some respect, both of you, to the person at the podium. Thank you.
If you take a walk down Calvert Street, the first building on the left-hand side, you'll see the Calvert Street Apartments, so they're known. Built in, I believe, 1928. 1928, the fathers of Harrison thought there was a need for an apartment house in '28. In the 1960s, they recognized the fathers of the town, mothers of the town, that they needed apartments, and the Newport Towers was built. And then the Executive House was built, I believe, in the late 60s. These projects, you know, once again, they'll be approved one by one. I don't think every single lot is going to be developed, because not everybody wants to develop it. Right now, Calvert Street is a, is a mixture, there's warehouses there and so forth. This is a win-win situation for the revitalization, revitalization of downtown. Mr. Bordeaux, I believe, was very correct when he said, "Calvert Street would look great with some new trees." Okay, no one's going to argue that. Calvert Street will look great when the entrance to Metro North is improved. And I want to thank the board for their time and consideration, and I thank you very much. On behalf of all the property owners that have previously sent letters, joined the petition, Mr. Attilio Tassie, who's co-petitioned, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd just like to make a few comments on this public hearing while it's still public As everyone said tonight, we have many different sections of Harrison. We have a downtown area, we have a West Harrison area, we have a Brentwood area, we have a Purchase area. All neighborhoods are different, all neighborhoods are deserving of nothing but the best for that particular neighborhood. It's just about impossible to compare Purdy Street development with Calvert Street development. They're two completely different areas of town. They're close, but the neighborhoods that surround Purdy Street and neighborhoods that surround Calvert Street are completely different. On Calvert Street, you have one-family homes backing up the Calvert Street. Purdy Street, you have some four-story and three-story buildings with no really two-family, one-family homes directly related to Purdy Street. So to say a PB district is good for, wherever's good for Purdy Street in that area, Colonial Place, is good for Calvert Street, I don't think is, is fair to say. We all on the board agree that four stories may be good on Calvert Street on the east side along the railroad tracks, okay? There's not about, you're not buffering on any two-family homes or one-family homes, so I think on that side, perhaps there is a need or it wouldn't be that bad or would look pretty good on the south side or east side. On, on the west side, it's a different story. As I said earlier, there are some one- and two-family homes, some R50s owned, and homes are quite small. And to have a four-story building in your backyard may be overwhelming. I also have to correct you, because the zone does not go to Paul's Place. I know you did a lot of research on it, Robert, but it only goes to, to Batavia Place, all right? So it does not go to Paul's Place. So those are some of my thoughts on this, on this, on this submission. The planning board have a, has a three-page document here that I'm sure everyone had a privilege to read it and took time out to read it and study it, I know the applicant has. So I tend to agree with everything the planning board said. There are exceptions that can be made for each individual property, and we should go with the recommendations of the planning board. That's, that's what I, what I feel, so. Anyone else at the dais who'd like to speak on this, now's the time, and then we'll close the public hearing.
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could just address that on the point of process, I would advise that if you wish to modify the petitioner's petition to accommodate some of the recommendations of the planning board, that you not close the hearing so that we can make those amendments. The hearing would then remain properly open so that any further comment on the changes themselves would be able to be put into the record, and then you would close it. And if you want, I can certainly highlight, because it has been a while since the planning board provided its memo, but if anyone on the board wants to sort of, the highlights of their recommendations, we can run through it. If not...
No, no, no. Yeah, we went through that.
Terrific.
Well, why don't we, can we do this? Can we just do this? Can we incorporate the recommendations of the planning board into the public record? And would that be sufficient so that we can close the public hearing and then make decisions as to what it is that we want to do at a later date?
Let me take, the general convention is, if the changes that are being made are more restrictive, then it's permissible. If they're less restrictive, then generally not. So just give me a second, I'm just going to look at them. With regard to building height, certainly the original request was a blanket modification with the height. I think the board, in agreeing with the planning board, wishes to reduce that to only a portion. I would say that was, that would be appropriate as a reduction. The applicant asked for the open space requirement to be eliminated. The planning board recommended that you not do that. Again, I think that would be acceptable to make that change in amending the law if you wish to before you close the hearing. And it seems that they agree with the other aspects of the law with regard to its scope and size, so I would say, yes, you could do it that way.
Well, there were some recommendations that they made that were not...
For example?
There was guidance, there wasn't a specific recommendation.
Well, that would sort of, a little bit depend on what the board now decides to do. I know we heard from the, from the mayor, and so to the extent that there's consensus...
Just refresh my memory, what, what had been approved on the east side of the street with respect to development? There was a, a development plan that was approved some time ago for a combination of residential and retail.
Are you talking about a specific project?
Yes.
I'm not sure what address you're referring to.
I think it's...
That was many years ago.
Oh, it was, no, it was less than 10 years ago, it was probably 76 years ago.
I'm not, I'm just not sure which location...
Thank you.
I said, I'm just, I'm not sure what location you're referring to.
No, there, there was an application, I wasn't on the board at the time, but sometime going back maybe six years ago, there was some modification, or some accommodation made for a development plan that included retail space on the ground floor, which the zone required, and housing above...
Correct, including, the planning board supports the concept of eliminating that retail use, and it explains why it makes sense. You know, listen, the reality is, you guys have had two decades of complaints about the downtown. One of the positives that the planning board clearly flagged is that this supports a revitalization of the downtown, and that is, every consultant that we've had that's come through to discuss revitalizing the downtown has made that point, that you need to get, you need to get support in terms of residential uses. And this does that. So I would say, find out whether there's consensus on the board for the changes, and if you want, then we can, we can go through those.
I think the mayor was, the mayor was very, very on point and correct. I think the only item where there is agreement on the board is with respect to the east side of the street, that area of property that abuts the Metro North right away on railroad tracks. And other than that, I think there's a variety of opinion.
And there's a variety of opinion for, different areas of Calvert Street have different surroundings. I mean, there's one piece of parcel that backs up to the Recreation Center, which is very tall and high building.
Yeah, but not only that, right behind that, we modified that zone to a single-family...
R50.
I'd say you've got people there that have single-family homes, and, you know, having a four-story building in their backyard is going to be an encumbrance to them, right? So we understand that. I, I think what we'd like to do is really deliberate on and discuss amongst ourselves and see if there's an opportunity to come to some agreement on this.
That's appropriate.
But the question is, do we need to keep the public hearing open and do that?
You certainly...
People don't know.
Hey, sir, sir, sir.
I didn't ask you.
You're out of order. The question was whether or not, the question that the board asked was whether or not you need to keep the hearing open in order to deliberate. The answer to that is clearly no. You can close the hearing and you can deliberate. What you would not be able to do is make changes to the law that made it more liberal, more expansive. You couldn't extend it another street, you could not take it to five stories, you could not make it more expansive...
I don't think there's anyone on this board that has a view...
Correct, so today, but I'm answering Steve's question, is, you certainly could close the hearing, deliberate, you don't even need to complete your deliberations today, you can deliberate for as long as you want, you just could not make the legislation more expansive and permissive.
It could be more restrictive than that.
It certainly could be, and that would be your legislative purview.
Thank you.
The other thing we could do is, to the extent that there were thought processes that led to things that were not completely discussed, we could always reopen it at any time, and we can reschedule the public hearing and put it back on.
Sure, can always do it.
I'm telling you, I want to get more people to get involved, and you're saying you're going to close it. I stand, I stand for that.
I haven't said, I haven't said anything yet.
No, you're going to close it now. Don't close it, please. Give me a break, this is forever downtown. Do it in person, I gotta go.
Good, good night.
Don't close the public hearing, I'm asking you.
I don't understand.
Well, I don't understand, we have a gentleman at the podium, please give him your attention.
Well, how about I get up a second time?
You've been up about nine times, Robert.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. I would seriously hope that you consider, or more consider, you know, the four stories that you leave it open for the board to discuss. I got an indication that you were concerned about the one or two-family houses, the one-family houses that back up on Calvert Street. I call your attention to the fact that this is the third meeting. And right now, if you go down Calvert Street, that's my building, or my, the building I own with my wife, which is directly across the street from the Calvert Street apartment, and so is the next property owned by Barbara Hertzberg, that surely those two properties should have the privilege of going four stories. Go further down, and you see a warehouse that's been there over 60 years, a long warehouse, and if you speak to the area of residents, or if they wanted to come out, many people don't come out, they will tell you about the many trailer, tractor trailers that go there on a regular basis, back up and block traffic. If you check your police reports or accident reports of yesterday, at about 5 o'clock, 5:30, there'll be a report that there was an accident, that a tractor-trailer truck hit another car making the turn, had difficulty making the turn. If the people, if we're so concerned about the well-being of the residents in the area, we try to make it more attractive, have a more attractive building there. Go down further, and you'll see, you'll see trucks parked there at night.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, this is your second time at the podium, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Right, 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 but the thing is, to me, it came out of the left field that this, that you weren't going to have an open mind to 45 feet and four floors. I just, you know, it just, I didn't think that was coming from the board.
Hold on, John, with all, with all due respect, you know, this is the, I guess, the third time. We have been debating, and not debating in a hostile thing, but we, there's a number of people, including myself, you know, that in, you know, expressed the concern about a blanket rezoning change in the, in the, in the district as you, as you defined it. And as we discussed at the last meeting, you know, even the planning board in dealing with the issue talked about, because of the potential intrusion into, into residential, you know, a transition, and we talked about that. And, you know, Ronnie, and we have had, obviously, conversations independently, one-on-one, you know, one could, one could reach a conclusion that the Metro North side is far less sensitive, the side that leads up to the parking lots and the track is far less sensitive than, than the other. So, I mean, to say that, to say that we are thinking about those things is a surprise, I, I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's fair, because we've been discussing it from the very beginning, I think.
Well, what...
We went through this one point at a time, at the last meeting at the time before that.
We, we, we asked you to review the planning board minutes, which you really never did, and, and, you know, I've expressed my concerns about the area, especially closer to Nelson. So we have been discussing it.
I know you have been, and, but, but you have a provision in the zoning code, and your council will tell you that the board, this is a special exception, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but it's my understanding of the law that the board is, this is a special exception area. It's, it's all along Holstead Avenue and all over the Business District, you have it built in. And what that means, and your attorneys will correct me wrong, that you look, you, the board, looks at each individual project separately, and they stand on their merits separately. And that's what I'm asking you to do, please, on behalf of everybody, the Carnival's, to keep it open, to keep the 45-foot zone open, area, and then go one by one. Mr. Allegrini? Mr. Allegrini, isn't this a special exception area?
The answer is not that simple. Yes, it's a special exception use that ultimately each property would come back to this board. However, by applicability of New York State case law, a special exception use permit is a determination that it's appropriate in that location. So sort of the, the balance of proof tips a bit, whereas if the board were to decide that one side has a height limitation on a case-by-case basis, the use would be permitted. If there were special circumstances that warranted a greater degree of height, they could certainly go to the zoning board for height, and we've had already in the zone height variances to accommodate good projects that needed to be a little bit higher. So it's kind of the other way around.
And that's what my comments were earlier. Each property in the town village of Harrison has specific needs and wants and can be developed in different ways, and I think that's why we have our planning board and zoning boards.
Right, well, no, no, you have a planning board to make recommendations, and the board always does not follow them, okay? If the board followed the planning board every time, you wouldn't need a town board. So you have the discretion. And I just say, it's not going to hurt anybody if you approve the four, forty-five feet. Right now, there are probably buildings there thirty-eight feet, thirty-nine feet right now. There's already apartment houses on the right side. Mr. Pugliese has two apartment houses, okay? You go down, way down to pass that on Ellsworth Avenue, there's a medical center there. It's a humongous project, okay? But the people, I just don't see it, that, that, that none of the neighbors have complained, okay? They were notified, and this is unique, that a lot of the property owners, their properties don't abut. They're not right on top of, of the Calvert Street. The few properties that there are, they set back, hey, you turn, you're on, you're on Nelson Avenue, and you've got commercial properties there. You've got commercial properties, and we discussed it before. It used to be Scally's Flower Shop there. So that's commercial. It's always been commercial.
One store.
You're not going to change the neighborhood. And once again, the people should have a right, you should give more people a right, if they want to have a part, they want to live in apartment complexes, why aren't their rights equal to the people's rights that are already there? What makes the people have superior rights that are always there? That's not...
No, there's no, no chat. Okay, John, let's wrap it up, because you, that's your second time at the mic, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know what? That's not nice to call out when people are speaking. That's really rude. It's not just you, Rob.
It's so ridiculous to say that this commercial property, when it's a once, a single-story flower shop.
We, we, we know it's there, thank you.
I know. You guys, hopefully you can see through that. I request that you keep the public hearing open. I'd like to let as many people know as I can. Again, it's up to me, I guess, and I will, you know, you want to do it right. This is forever.
Thank you.
This is forever.
Thank you.
And you're rushing it through, I don't know why.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This is a little heated. It sounds to me that you need to keep them, the public hearing open, because on both sides, they seem like they're not quite satisfied. So, you know what? In this case, I think time is your friend. Don't rush into anything. Really get a feel for what the people in town wants. Give it a chance. Either way, just don't rush it. You know, we all live here, we all want to stay here, and, you know, the fact to say that, that the young people want to come back to town is probably very true. However, I don't think they can afford the rents that they're going to be charged, so they still won't be coming back to town. They'll come back and live with mom and dad. So the people that wants to downsize will not be able to, because they have to have their children live with them. So these are other issues, and I think you really do need to think about the school, the downtown traffic already, without all the buildings, is a nightmare. I mean, just lunchtime, go down there. It takes you twenty minutes just to go from one end to the other, and really, there's nothing to go to in downtown, so it's like, I don't know what the traffic there for, but it's going to get worse.
You know what? I just want to, that, that's not a, the comments here are just outrageous. First of all, we have some really nice restaurants downtown, and maybe you should try eating at some of them.
Oh, no, I do go to them.
Because there are reasons why it is getting more crowded downstairs.
I was downtown yesterday eating.
We have Porto Napoli, which is a great restaurant. We have Viva Lo, which is a great restaurant. We have the restaurant that opened up on the corner of Halsted and Harrison Avenue, which is phenomenal. So we have the Mexican restaurant.
I apologize, I did not...
Pierrot's is a new restaurant in town. There are reasons for people coming. It's crowded for a reason.
I guess that is true.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Can we just talk about timeframe and timing here for a second? All right, so, assuming that at some point in time, counsel?
Listen.
Yeah, assuming that at some point in time we come to some agreement on this, right? So I'm going to go to your issue on timeline. I, I wouldn't think that that's going to happen very quickly, right? But just assume for a minute that somewhere in the next two months, this board reaches some conclusion on what it wants to do. There's some idea that's been given here tonight that this board is accepting of the development proposal or the change in zoning for the properties along Calvert Street that are on the east side of the street that abut Metro North. There's been a statement made that the board is at odds with what to do with the other side of the street, if anything, right? So I would suggest that there's going to be a period of time where this board's going to deliberate on that, and that will probably take some time. And whether we reach a conclusion or not remains to be seen. I don't know that we will, but assuming for a minute that we do, and we then turn back to the Law Department, what our proposed in draft amendments to the zoning code are. That'll take you all some period of time to circulate, to get back to us to comment on, to redraft, to recirculate, and then there would be a public hearing on that, would there not?
Potentially. Again, you know, think of it this way, you have a rezoning petition that maybe has four elements, and I'm going to make it up, but, you know, one allows greater height, one allows greater size, one allows elimination of a parking requirement, one allows something else, and the board decides to eliminate some of it, but making it essentially more restrictive than what the applicant asked for, you can do that without a rehearing.
I understand that, but there would...
So it would, so the answer to your question about whether or not there'd be another here would depend on what you did. If you made changes that were more expansive and more permissive, then yes, we would tell you you need another hearing.
But there certainly would, there certainly would be an opportunity for that information to be made public and for the public to come in and comment and weigh in on whatever proposed changes we're making, if we were going to make any changes, right? So, so, so to the point, right? This is not going to happen in any short period of time. I'm, I'm not prepared to do that, I don't think anybody else. Gentlemen?
Here's, here's my, here's my feeling on this. I mean, this is the third, now this is, I guess, the third meeting where we've had in-depth discussions on it. I spoke to every member of the board privately on this, and there are differences. Everybody is cautious, you know, there's no stamp of approval on this. I mean, some of you who get up there, you know, have described this as an indictment of something that, you know, we're proposing, whatever. An applicant has a right to come in with a proposal, and we have an obligation to deliver it, to deliberate and deal with it fairly, which this board is trying to do. And there is not, in my mind, consensus on board as to where we're going to come out on this. I mean, that's just the flat-out reality of it. Somebody made the comment that this is important, and we're not blind, we know it is, okay? It is, and we're not running through, we're not running, you know, we're not running down the block at full speed to go do anything. We want to be sure that anything we do is well-thought-through. And the planning board, I thought, did a good job on this, but, you know, there are things in there that, you know, we've been talking about, maybe we don't quite agree with, but a lot of it makes some sense. And the question as to, you know, how far it goes and where it cuts off, and whether it deals with all of it, some of it, whether there's a transition, all of these things we've discussed, and I don't think we have a consensus yet. So my feeling is, given the fact that it is as important as it is, I think that what we should do is probably to, to adjourn the public meeting, not close it, until we come to grips with where we think this ought to be. And at that point, however along it takes, without any specific return date, at that point, say, okay, town, this is kind of like what we think, what happened here, how do you react to it? And I, I don't have a problem with doing it, considering the significance of the application. And I don't think we have a specific timeline that we're going to deal with this, because it is complicated, and it really deserves...
Don't we have to, don't we have to actually schedule it, actually carry it to a second...
Yes, you should. You should. Mr. Maltham pointed out that rather than adjourn it sin die, it should be a date just for control.
Okay, what would life do, so that, you know, we could, we could pick a date, but if that date, we really haven't made progress...
Then you further adjourn it.
Then we'll just adjourn it again.
But we put it on the scroll, it's, it's just going to be adjourned again, so people don't go through the effort of coming down here and so, and so forth.
That's a problem.
Honorable members, I'm going to make your life easier. I'm going to make your life easier, because this project has been on over for fourteen months. Over fourteen months, this request has been before the board. It got stonewalled three or four times, it's getting on the calendar, okay? It was rejected for no reason whatsoever. It's unheard of, unheard of, that this should take so long. This is not rocket scientist work, okay? And to hear this board say, you want to adjourn this case over and over, is an insult. It's an insult to everyone that has this petition, it's an insult to the Harrison residents, okay? It's an insult to all the Harrison residents that you're, apparently you're grandstanding. You're just denying it. So I'll make your life very simple now. I'll withdraw the petition, okay? Instead of having this board have going delay after delay, and even telling us what you're going to do, that what, you're going to hinder progress. You're going to hinder the development of Calvert Street, okay? Look at Harrison. It's a disgrace, okay? It's an embarrassment. And if you think you're proud about this town, the way it looks, I'm not. And something can be done about it, and you just push it down the road.
John, you're not being, you're not being fair.
I'm being fair, it's withdrawn.
Well, actually, as a matter of law for the board, hold on one second, just as a matter of process, Marlena, hold on. As a matter of process, the yelling by Mr. Voach, and I, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I understand that very much.
I was speaking to the volume...
I was not yelling.
Well, in my household, you would be yelling. The volume...
You're listening in your house.
The volume at which you're speaking...
That's the way I speak, and I was not yelling, and I want to apologize. Don't tell me I was yelling, okay? No.
I'll leave whether or not you're yelling right now to a matter of public opinion, but what I was going to say to the board is that the legislative function is purely discretionary. When a petitioner brings a petition to the board, the board has no obligation to hear it. In fact, the board initially could have said, we're just not interested, have a nice day, let me finish, don't interrupt. Once the board decides to accept the petition and begin the hearing process, that legislative change is the board's. So to the extent that the board wishes to continue to consider this rezoning, just as a matter of process, it's not the petitioner's ability to simply say, I withdraw it and I take it away. It's, it's your ball, and I just wanted the board to know that.
I disagree with you. A petitioner can withdraw his application. You're telling the people on Calvert Street that they have to go forward with something that they don't want to go with?
The, the town board can rezone any section of town of its own volition, that's what I'm saying.
Fine, but let it go. It's withdrawn. It's withdrawn.
I have to agree with Joe on this, that if you guys are going to make a decision and deliberate on this matter, and whether you decide for it to be more or less restrictive while you're deliberating, the result should be that the public hearing should stay open. Counsel mentioned that if you make it less restrictive, public has a right to know about it. So while you're making that decision, because you, you all said that you haven't made a decision as to whether it's going to be more or less restrictive, you have an obligation to keep the public hearing open.
I respectfully disagree with that. We have made a decision. I think the comments that have been made here were to point that our interest is only making it more restrictive, not less, okay?
But while you're... So, so... You're guaranteeing to the people, hold on a second.
I'm being pretty clear.
Wait a minute, hold on, this is a public hearing, I can say what I want.
I'm being pretty clear on this, that we're not, we are not interested, we can't even...
Last time I checked, it was, this was a back and forth.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make a point here. We're not interested in making it more liberal. We're interested, if we do anything, in making it more restrictive than what's been proposed to us, okay?
So what you're saying is you're guaranteeing the public that it's going to be more restrictive?
I think you're saying something different. I think, there's, there's different views from the board, pretty clearly, on whether to close it or open it, but I think what you've heard clearly from me is, if they were to make it less restrictive, they'd have an obligation to have additional opportunity for the public to comment.
Right, but Steve can't make that decision for the rest of the board, though.
No, he can't. But the point is, were they to close the hearing, the board in essence would be stuck with voting on it as proposed or making it more restrictive. They could not make it more liberal. You understand that? Without having a further hearing, that's all. And now, really, what I would say to the board is, if there's not any more comment on the substance of this, you should decide what you're going to do with the hearing, and let's move on with our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any object to keeping it open just to keep it back?
No, absolutely not. I, listen, I...
John, we are in the, oh...
Jack, you might have the calendar for meetings.
I have the calendar. Thank you.
October 1, October 14, November 5, November 18, December 3, and December 17.
When is the second meeting in October? I don't know that we're...
Fourteenth.
Yeah.
It's the fourteenth in October.
Yeah, it's a short, because it's on Wednesday.
Yeah, right. Okay, so I will, I make the motion that we adjourn till the fourteenth of October.
Why? Why are we going to do that?
What was your suggestion?
Longer. I mean, there is, there isn't a snowball's chance that this...
Steve, I was pulling it out of the air. Pick a date.
I don't care, make it November. It doesn't, there isn't, in my mind, based on what I know, based on all the discussions that we've had individually...
Yeah, I don't think we'll be ready in October.
Here's a suggestion. Make it the second meeting in November, that will give you ample time to give us any comments individually or together.
Not a draft, but we're going to do anything.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Okay.
So that's November nineteenth, eighteen, so Wednesday.
November eighteenth.
Why is it, why is it?
Whatever that, whatever it is.
Why is it...
I don't know, it might be that religious, something like that.
Oh, yeah, right, okay, interface.
Service.
Right, okay, November eighteenth.
So that's the motion, second?
Second. Fair?
Hi.
Hi.
Jackie, what's the first meeting?
Fifth. Okay, we have a late item on personnel. Okay? To approve the part-time availability of Matthew Allegrini at $7.14 an hour.
I'm sorry.
We're moving on.
Wait.
Can we take a two-minute break? I think we could.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's a good idea. Motion to... The sandwich is upstairs. Motion to recess, two minutes. He's home, like, watching TV, let's see if he's going to get approved.